I'd like to call to order the 2021-2022 Lake Forest City Council. Start with administering the oath of office to Mayor Pandeleon. So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, George Pandeleon.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
City of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
The county of Lake.
And the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
That I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up will be First Ward Alderman-elect James Morris. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Excellent. Repeat. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Morris.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And in the state of Illinois.
And in the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Alderman.
Thanks, Biddy.
Next up, we have Second Ward Alderman-elect Melanie Rommel. Raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Melanie Rommel.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Alderman Rommel. Next up is Alderman, Third Ward Alderman-elect Eric Goshgarian. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eric Goshgarian.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
And in the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Alderman Goshgarian. Following, Fourth Ward Alderman-elect Ray Bushman. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Raymond Bushman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Having been elected to the office of alderman.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
And in the state of Illinois.
And in the state of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
And that I will discharge the duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Alderman Bushman. If we were in person, I would shake all of your hands and say congratulations. Mr. Mayor, floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're muted.
He is muted.
Sorry. My apologies. Welcome to the Monday, May 3, 2021 virtual session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Pandeleon.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Karas.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Notes is absent. Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
And Alderman Weber.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I need to make the following statement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this May 3, 2021 city council meeting will be held remotely. The first item on the agenda is election and appointment of city officers. First. The first is the election by the city council and appointments by the mayor as required by charter and city code. So I appoint as city supervisor Jason Wishe, city treasurer Elizabeth Hollob, city clerk Margaret Boyer, city marshal and collector Carl Waldorf, city attorney Julie Tappendorf, and city surveyor and engineer Gaywalt Hamilton Associates. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Next item is comments by the mayor. The first thing I'm going to do is to be a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental illness affect almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illnesses recover if given the necessary services and supports in their communities, and whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and to our communities, and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illnesses every year, and whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, and whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illness. Now therefore, I, George A. Pandeleon, mayor of the city of Lake Forest, on behalf of the community, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And as mayor, I also call upon all Lake Forest citizens, other government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. I would request a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber. Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce Molly Sarver, who's going to be representing PAWS for Patrick.
She's on the phone. Mr. Mayor will bring her right in.
All right, Molly, you are now with the council.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfectly.
Yes, okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name is Molly Sarver, and I've been a resident of Lake Forest for 20 years now. I'm here because I serve on the Board of Directors of PAWS for Patrick, a local nonprofit organization that was founded by the Romer family in memory of their son Patrick. Patrick lived with depression and anxiety for most of his young life. He died as a result of his illness last May, just about a month before he would have graduated from Lake Forest High School. We are all incredibly blessed to live in a stunningly beautiful community with an abundance of resources, the most generous, talented, and highly successful people and amazing school. And yet, there is suffering everywhere. Growing up today is difficult, exceedingly so, and I think there are more of us parents than less who understand the pain and struggle of raising a child who has a mental illness. The Romers founded PAWS for Patrick because they want to help ease the suffering. All of us who serve on the Board of Directors want to help change the conversation about mental health by breaking the stigma that still persists. We want to raise awareness of this disease, and we want to help young people like Patrick because all of us are intimately familiar with the many barriers that exist in seeking professional treatment for mental illness. These are our collective experiences that we know to be true. A young person who has a mental health illness doesn't even know what that is in the first place. He or she doesn't want to feel like they are different or that there's something wrong with them. Getting a middle-school-aged child, or any young person for that matter, to agree to seek professional help is often a nonstarter. If you are lucky enough to get your child to agree, finding a therapist who he or she connects with in the first place can be daunting. More likely, after several failed attempts, the interest or willingness that was once there is gone. Then there's the issue of medication. Many young people and parents today don't want to take medicine. Yet, if they agree, it takes months to see what kind of impact it has on them, how the side effects will make them feel, and whether or not it's helping. Their bodies are changing and growing. Pedoseine is oftentimes challenging, and it also doesn't cure them. That is a key point for us as parents, as an organization, and as an organization. Mental health is real, yet invisible. It is treatable, but there is no cure. It is an illness, just as cancer is an illness, and it is lifelong. We need to change the words we use when talking about mental health. It's not an issue, or a mood, or as simple as changing one's mindset. One of the biggest and most important barriers to seeking professional help is insurance. The coverage for the treatment of mental health illness in our country is a disgrace. Many of the necessary treatments are not covered by insurance, so one's only option is to pay for it yourself. I don't mean to be dramatic, but the truth is, the cost of these interventions can literally bankrupt a family. Most families in America cannot afford any of the critical interventions that can give a child their best hope for survival. Which brings me back to PAWS for Patrick. Patrick was a kid who didn't enjoy talking to a therapist. He didn't want to take medicine. He didn't like the way it made him feel. But he found incredible comfort and safety when he was with his animals. We at PAWS for Patrick believe animals have a special power. They love us unconditionally. They don't talk back to us. They don't roll their eyes at us. They simply want to help keep us company, play with us, cuddle with us, and love us. According to the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the average delay between onset of mental health symptoms and treatment is 11 years. That can be a lifetime, and that can cost lives. Patrick's father, Steve, and I were speaking the other day, and he said he feels that what PAWS for Patrick is trying to accomplish, connecting young people who live with mental illness to emotional support animals, is like putting a Band-Aid on a systemic problem. And maybe it is. But that Band-Aid may just be the thing that can keep a person alive and give them hope, happiness, and joy long enough for them to get the treatment they need, long enough to give them the opportunity to grow up and have a future. Our organization was only just founded in August of last year, and we have already connected over 60 clients to help them acquire an emotional support animal for themselves or their family. Patrick's mom, Francie, has shared that every time one of our clients receives his or her ESA, she feels like it's Patrick reaching out to them and giving them a hug. As I said, we at PAWS for Patrick fully believe that having the love of an animal by your side can make all the difference. This past Saturday on May 1st, we launched what we are calling our Turn Our Towns Green campaign. Green is the official color of Mental Health Awareness Month, and we distributed green ribbons to community members, not only here in Lake Forest, but also in Lake Bluff, Deerfield, Glenco, Highland Park, Oneica. And after seeing one of our social media posts, someone whom we had never met before made it happen in Buffalo Grove. We believe every town in America should be green every May, and we are so grateful to the city of Lake Forest for allowing us this display of support for everyone who is living with a mental illness. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you and my fellow residents tonight. I'd like to offer my sincere gratitude to you, Mr. Mayor, and all of you, most especially Alderman Notes for his friendship and assistance in connecting me to Kathy Sterniak. And I'd like to thank Kathy for her cooperation and assistance on behalf of the management of our fine city and for conducting us to the various departments within the city's government for allowing us to turn our town green. Lastly, I'd like to invite everyone to please visit our website at pawsforpatrick.org to learn more about us and stay informed about the important work we are doing. And we do have additional green ribbons in the bin outside of Croya, as well as inside the Lake Forest Station Spring pop-up shop for anyone who would still like to participate. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much, Molly. That was well said. This is a very new charity in town, but boy, the impact they've had has been really remarkable. And I've really, really been amazed to see how quickly they've vaulted right into everybody's consciousness. I think it's because they're right. They're touching on something that's affected all of us at some level or another, and that often is not adequately addressed on many levels.
Well, we're very grateful for your support. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for the display in town. It's attracted a lot of attention, a lot of positive, a lot of positive energy and goodwill, so.
Well, we're very grateful.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. Have a very good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, next item on mayor's comments is 2021-2022 Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. We have a number of these tonight. We'll have another group of these at the next meeting. There's still some moving parts. For Building Review Board, reappointing as chair Jim Diamond, and appointing Scott Rankin and Timothy Franzen for Historic Preservation Commission, appointing Maureen Grinnell from Ward 3. I should have read the wards. I apologize. And for the Plan Commission, appointing John Dixon as chair from the First Ward, Louis Pickus being appointed from the Second Ward, Mark Pasquazie being appointed from the Fourth Ward, and Barrett Davy being appointed from the Second Ward. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, appointing Mike Seaman as chair, and Ari Bass appointed from the Second Ward. Mike Seaman is from the Third Ward. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Preschlack.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, I'm going to read off the construction of our city council subcommittees. And I thought, rather than try to explain it all in terms of who's going where, because we've got a number of changes this year as we anticipate some people turning off, as we were chatting about before the meeting, and new people filling important roles on the committee. So I'm just going to read off the construction of each of our subcommittees. It'll take me a minute or two. This will all be published on the website and in the minutes. And I think the plan is to send you all a cheat sheet as well tomorrow. So. And this is just an information item. Item, these don't require a vote. The Finance Committee will continue to be chaired by Alderman Morris, and all the members of the city council serve on the Finance Committee. Personnel, Compensation and Administration Committee, I will continue to chair, and Ray Bushman and Jed Morris, Alderman Morris, will join me on that committee. Property and Public Lands will be chaired, continue to be chaired by Alderman Goshgarian, and will be, he'll be joined also by Alderman Weber and Alderman Notes. That's the current construction of that committee. Public Works will be chaired by Alderman Preschlack, and he will be joined on that committee by Alderman Karas and Alderman Notes. Environmental and Sustainability will continue to be chaired by Alderman Rommel, and she will be joined by Alderman Weber and Alderman Preschlack. The Ad-Hoc Committees, Alderman Goshgarian will continue to be the liaison to the Gulf Advisory Committee. And the Marketing of Lake Forest Ad-Hoc Committee will continue to be chaired by Alderman Karas. Then there are a number of liaison positions. Alderman Morris will continue to be liaison to the Audit Committee. Alderman Weber will continue to chair the Civic Beautification Committee. The Founders Council, which is associated with Lake Forest College, will continue to be myself and Alderman Morris. Liaisons to state and local, or state, federal, and other local governments will continue to be handled by me. The Legal Services will be handled by Alderman Bushman. Parks and Recreation Liaison will be again Alderman Goshgarian. Public Safety will be myself. Senior Services will be Alderman Morris. And Youth Services, predominantly Croya, will be, continue to be Alderman Karas. So just reading that for the record, and I think I've spoken to each of you about all these changes, or a few of these changes, and looking forward to a great two years. The last item on my agenda is simply a commendation to our District 115 Lake Forest High School, which last week was named the seventh-best high school in the state of Illinois by U.S. News &amp; World Report, which doesn't sound, it's wonderful because they're up from 18th to 7th, but more importantly, five of the six schools that rank ahead of Lake Forest are City of Chicago selective enrollment magnet schools. So they really fit in a different category to a general admission public high school. The only one in the state that still outranks Lake Forest High School is Stevenson, which I think we all know is about four times the size. And I think people are not indifferent between going to Lake Forest High School and going to Stevenson just as a matter of scale, if nothing else. But it's a great accomplishment. It's been something that I think had needed some attention, and obviously it got the attention it needed. And we can all carry the flag proudly at this point and say that all those people that bet on Lake Forest over the last two or three years and moved here by the thousands have been well rewarded for their confidence in our schools. So congratulations to the school board. I know they've had quite a year. To do that in a COVID year with all the other things that were going on around the school board, it was such sort of a sweet vindication of a lot of hard work by a lot of dedicated and highly professional people. So congratulations. It's something we can all be very proud of. That concludes my comments for the evening. Next on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Very well. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. And Mayor, I think that was a good segue for me when you, as you referenced, all of the young families who've been moving into the community over the last year or so. As the council's aware, we spent a good deal of time discussing what was really one of the silver linings of an otherwise challenging 12 months, and that was the explosive resurgence of Lake Forest's real estate market. And given that our recent fiscal year just ended last week, I thought tonight would be a good opportunity to share a final summary of the real estate activity in the community. And so in that vein, I've asked Finance Director Elizabeth Hollob to provide a brief review of real estate transfer tax data from fiscal year '21, now that it is officially over. But I'll just say, before I turn it over to Elizabeth too, I should note that I continue to hear that the real estate market remains on fire this spring. I think really the only thing potentially slowing down transaction volume compared to a year ago is just the lack of inventory on the market. So I'm really excited to see these trends continue. And as we've discussed several times, you know, as a community, we won't rest on our laurels either. We'll continue to market Lake Forest as the best place in Illinois to come and raise a family. And again, I think our recent experience in the real estate market is bearing a lot of that out. So with that, Elizabeth, happy to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. I assume everybody can hear me and see the slides. Appreciate the introductory comments by both the mayor and the city manager. It certainly has been an unprecedented year in regards to the real estate transfer tax. Looking first at the number of taxable residential transfers. Here, the chart shows the last five fiscal years. Of course, our fiscal year ends on April 30th, so you can see the totals by month and by fiscal year. And we had eclipsed the last five years early in the year. July to August is when we effectively, year-to-date, were exceeding the last four fiscal years. But we came in completing fiscal year '21 with 663 residential transfers, which far outpaced the last five years, as you can see those totals. And even going back to fiscal year 2007, which was the first fiscal year of the real estate transfer tax, the highest annual total since the real estate transfer tax has been put in place was 437 in fiscal year 2014. So this was, again, an unprecedented year going back to the original effective date of the real estate transfer tax. This next slide just looks at revenue generated by the real estate transfer tax. As you know, we have a small amount that comes from commercial transactions during the year, but most of the revenue comes from residential transfers. So fiscal year '21 real estate transfer tax revenue came in year-end 2.735 million, exceeding the budget projections significantly. This chart just shows the actual results for fiscal year 1920 and '21 with that breakdown between residential and commercial. So we had scaled back our estimate for fiscal year '21, anticipating that the global pandemic, which was just getting started when we began our fiscal year last year, would have a negative impact on real estate transfer tax revenues. So we scaled back our budget and totaled anticipated $900,000 for fiscal year '21. So you can see revenue, both residential and commercial, far exceeding those estimates. And, you know, we were also helped in fiscal year '21 by two significant commercial transactions, one being the scale at the sale of Combscott Park Apartments, as well as the sale of one of the buildings in the Conway Office Park. The last slide just shows the average sale price. So we take real estate transfer taxes generated on residential sales and just provide an average sale price by month and by year, included in the fiscal, in the last report sent to the Finance Committee. So here, you're just seeing, going back to fiscal year 2007, first year of the real estate transfer tax, what the average sale price on residential transfers were in each fiscal year. And I would just note that the last two years, '20 and '21, 21 average sale was $926,000, compared to an average sale in fiscal year '20 of $816,000. So that was a 6.63% increase over fiscal year '20 as an average sale price. As you can see, fiscal year '07 to '09, Um, as you can see, fiscal year '07 to '09, um, sale prices were significantly higher before the Great Recession. Um, but I did go back and take a look at revenues in those years. So despite the average sale price being much higher than recent years, this is fiscal year '21 is the highest revenue generated from residential sales in any fiscal year going back to '07. So, great news all around, um, but that is a snapshot of how we came out for the fiscal year end, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you ever, um, answer Alderman Gashgarian's question about how we compare related to some of our comparable communities up and down the North Shore?
We did. We sent a survey out, which I was actually gonna include in the flash report this month, but, um, most communities were not seeing the growth that we were seeing. So some of them, uh, didn't have a real estate transfer tax, so they couldn't provide specific data. Some of them looked at water billing records to just see what kind of, you know, final utility bills they had to see closeouts. But, um, for the most part, our experience was, um, was an outlier from the other surrounding communities. But we will have that data included in your flash report this month.
Thank you. Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? I think the, uh, just, just, I, I can't prove this, but, uh, when you look at combination of interest rates being low, people wanting more space, uh, people wanting great schools, uh, and people wanting safety, you know, there's definitely a, a safety factor in some of this, uh, flight from the city. There's no doubt about it. And you combine that with the cost-effectiveness of our overall property taxes. You know, yes, our values are high, so the dollar amount of our taxes is still pretty significant. But if you took a comparable house at a comparable value and put it in a, any town anywhere near here, uh, you'd be paying significantly more in property taxes. So you, I think you combine all those factors and, you know, the word is out, and, uh, Lake Forest is a great deal. It's, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like, if I may, I'd just like to add, because, you know, we've had the pop-up job, and there are a number of people who have been coming through, and we've been meeting and, and conversing with them about, you know, if they live there, if they, um, you know, recently moved. And, uh, we, we've run into, I don't know, I mean, you know, an unbelievable number of, of couples who have, you know, empty nesters who have left Lake Forest and moved to California or Florida or Carolina, one of the Carolinas, and come back to Lake Forest, um, you know, to, just because they love this community so much. They love being part of it. They love all the amenities. They love just, just being here. Um, so I think there's, you know, I don't know if that's a culture, I don't know, I don't know what that is exactly, but there's something that really draws people to Lake Forest and draws them.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's true. And we certainly all know, most, I'm sure virtually all of us know people who live here but don't work here, who, you know, commute halfway across the country to get to their job every week or every two weeks. And, uh, being in Lake Forest is a whole lot easier in the world of Zoom than it used to be, because you don't have to get on a plane every Sunday night or Monday morning. You don't have, it's, you know, the issues of remoteness from downtown Chicago and, you know, having, not being, you know, as big a city as New York or Los Angeles or, you know, it, those, those barriers have been, uh, have been significantly reduced, and so people, people are coming back, so. We struggled with this for 10 years, and all of a sudden Jennifer came on board and It all got taken care of, so.
The Midas Touch.
Yep. So, hey, if it happens on your watch, you're allowed to take credit, right? You take the blame. So, uh, any other questions or comments?
Well, if there are no additional comments for Elizabeth, that would conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you. Nice little good news report. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Uh, we will put up the slide with the phone number. And anybody who would like to call in or, uh, click on the raise hand function on their screen, we'll wait a minute or two to see if there's anybody who'd like to, uh, comment or ask a question.
Mr. Mayor, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. Any callers?
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at the moment.
Thank you very much. Uh, and by the way, the call-in and dial-in information, uh, was all shared with, when the agenda was published, uh, at, at City Hall and online. There are no committee reports this evening, uh, so the next item is, uh, items for omnibus vote consideration. Uh, and we have 11 of those tonight. First is to approve the extension of the Mayor's Declaration of a Local State of Emergency until the next City Council meeting. Second is approval of the April 19th, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes. Third is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions as follows. From the Building Review Board, James Sikora and Chris Byers. From Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Gale. From the Plan Commission, Chair, Chairperson Rosemary Keer, Monica Artman-Ruggles, and Michael Freeman. And from the Zoning Board of Appeals, Mark Pasquazy. Fourth is approval of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Lake Forest City Council for the year 2022. Fifth is approval of the check register for the period of March 20th to April 23rd, 2021. Sixth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the Lake Forest portion of the Municipal Partnership Initiative 2021 Joint Sewer Lining Project Contract Low Bid to Hair Construction in the not to exceed, uh, budgeted amount of $175,000. Seventh is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the Lake Forest portion of the Municipal Partnership Initiative 2021 Concrete Curb and Sidewalk Replacement Project to Schroder and Schroder, Inc., for a not to exceed amount of $75,000. Eighth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the 2021 Valve Replacement Project Low Bid to Aqua Contractors in the amount of $300,000. Ninth is approval to authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract with Mariani Landscape for Cemetery Grounds Maintenance, Maintenance Services for an amount not to exceed $42,900. Tenth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee and the Parks and Recreation Board to award South Park Parking Lot Design Services to Hitchcock Design Group in the amount of $38,105, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $3895, for a total of $42,000. And eleventh is approval to purchase an Intelligent One Field Marking Paint Robot for the park section from Turf Tank in the amount of $43,500. Is there any item here that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a quick comment on item three. If that's okay? Uh, I just wanted to thank all those volunteers for serving in those roles. Our city is so lucky to have volunteers to serve in those important boards and commissions, and, uh, as a former caucus president, uh, I know how important it is, and I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Along those lines, are we having any of board and commission thank you dinners or any recognition this year? Any thought about that?
Unfortunately, uh, we're not at a point where we can do a large dinner, but we are thinking about, um, other small, um, gifts or tokens of appreciation, uh, for outgoing members. So I'll be happy as we, uh, have specific details to share that with the council, but certainly my hope is that by next year, we'll be back to doing, uh, a full in-person, uh, recognition and appreciation dinner.
We'll have lots of people at that dinner.
Yeah.
Three years, three years' worth of people, so.
Right, including former council members.
Yeah, exactly. Unless there are other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is additional items, uh, for discussion or comments by council members. Are any member of the council that would like to speak on any, on any subject this Hearing none, uh, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
We're making up for lost, well, we're just making up for a lot of time.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.